To just get this card.
Good evening. This is a work session of the Green Belt City Council. My name is Emmett Jordan. I'm the mayor.
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Protam.
Silky Pope, Councilmember.
Danielle McKenney, Councilmember.
Shetty Pompey, Councilmember.
Minnie Sol, Councilmember.
Rodney Roberts, City Council.
Well, thank you. Any information or discussion items for the end of the meeting? Mr. City Manager, do you have anything? Okay. Well, we hold these council work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month to exchange information with community stakeholder groups, so to gather information from staff, advisory boards, residents. No votes or formal actions are taken into our work sessions. Our work sessions, as well as our meetings, are open to the public, except for executive sessions, as authorized by state laws, but residents and others can observe our deliberations. We do strive to provide reasonable opportunities for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered. So we'll pause periodically for public comment, probably every 20 minutes or so. During these times, if you wish to make a, to address council or make a statement, you can, if you're in the room, just raise your hand after being recognized. You can go over to the podium. You need to state your name and where you live. We need that for the minutes. If you're on Zoom, use the Q&amp;A tab at the bottom of the screen to submit a written question. Or you can raise your virtual hand, and once again, after being recognized, we do need your name and where you live for the minutes. And if you're watching on cable TV, if you're watching the livestream on YouTube or Facebook, you can send us an email. You can send that to questions@greenbeltmd.gov. So as always, limit your remarks to three minutes. And speak on one topic related to the question under consideration, and we do ask that you avoid questioning the motives of others, and in general, let's all be civil in our remarks. So tonight is a very interesting evening. We're having a work session, and we're talking about the Green Belt Strategic Wayfinding Plan and Outline and a sound design, some concepts for the signage design. So before we dive right in, just like to acknowledge our City Manager, Jose Someron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, Council. Good evening, guests. You know, my kids asked me what I was meeting about tonight, and I say wayfinding, and they asked if Moana would be part of the presentation. I said, no. No Maui or Moana. Sorry, inside kids joke. Yeah, guys have kids.
I got it.
Okay.
So this is a project, you know, we have been talking about wayfinding and actually working with the county, and specifically working with Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission to try and coordinate our activities and our planning to come up with sort of a unified strategy. And also, we've received some grant support from Antocostia Heritage Trails, from ATHA, to come up with these site designs and outline of the plan. So we're joined by several members. Let's see, are you all with Maryland National Capital Park and Planning, or are you with the Neighborhood Design Group? Very good. Hey, I should probably just kick this over to our planner, Jamie Fear, who can kind of tee things up.
Thank you. So just for a little bit of background, and you started to give that, we applied for the Planning Assistance for Municipalities and Communities. Did I get that right? The PAMC, Technical Assistance, that MNCPCC Prince George's County Planning provides. This happened, I want to say back in 2021?
2022.
2022. So it was before I was on staff, the process was started, to develop a strategic wayfinding plan for the city. Now, Lobna, who is with Neighborhood Design Center, will go over what that does and does not entail. But this is actually separate from the ATHA work that we've done previously, though ATHA has also worked with the county and PAMC for a wayfinding plan as well, and we do have some ATHA wayfinding signage throughout the city. And so we have worked with them before on some wayfinding, and I think that will come up a little bit in the presentation, but is separate from this project. And so what you'll be seeing this evening is an outline of what we expect to see in the draft plan, probably early in 2025. And then also some sign design concepts. And so a reminder that they're very conceptual, and we do want your feedback on those to inform what the final plan will be. Ultimately, that final draft plan, the actual plan, is going to go back to APB and the Arts Advisory Board. You also have notes from their previous meeting when they saw an earlier iteration of this presentation and this draft concept plan. It will go back to them for comment and recommendation to council, and then staff will bring the final plan back to council for your adoption. And so tonight with us, we have the project manager, who's with MNCPCC Prince George's County Planning, Anunear. And then we have our project manager from Neighborhood Design Center, Lobna Chowdhury, and Christina Hartsfield, who's also with Neighborhood Design Center.
Great. Welcome. It's so nice to have you with us this evening. So before we dive right in, can you talk just a little bit about the Neighborhood Design Center? We have worked, the city of Greenbelt has worked with the Neighborhood Design Center on many projects over the past few years. And I believe you're located there in Hyattsville, at the Pyramid Arts Center Building, I suppose. But can you just describe the Neighborhood Design Center?
Again, I'm Christina Hartsfield. I am the Program Director for Architecture and Community Planning with the Neighborhood Design Center. I recently joined the organization in June of this year. I was also with Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, so I'm familiar with planning in the Prince George's County area. And with the Neighborhood Design Center, we are headquartered in Baltimore City. The organization was founded in 1968 from a speech that was given by Whitney M. Young that really charged the planning profession to respond accordingly to a lot of the social issues that were going on in neighborhoods across the country. So from that speech, a lot of different design centers in low and moderate income communities were established. The Neighborhood Design Center was one of those organizations that was established. Since then, we have grown to a staff of about 15 in-house staff. We do work primarily in Baltimore City, as well as in Prince George's County, and in some other parts of central Maryland. We primarily provide low bono or pro bono and low bono, or some FIFA services in architecture, landscape architecture, planning, project management, and other services around the planning profession. We do a lot of community-based planning, and that's really, I would say, our bread and butter to really start at the community level and really talk to the community members and try to gauge their desires for their neighborhoods, and really try to instill and implement that into the planning practices and the design that we propose for the stakeholders and our partners.
Well, thank you. I'm glad I asked. Of course, Whitney Young is the founder of the Urban League. So, and just, so wayfinding, exactly what is wayfinding, and what is strategic wayfinding?
Yeah, so we'll get into that in the PowerPoint and presentation, but essentially, wayfinding is a way for people to reach a destination, right? And it needs to be accessible. It needs to be easy to find. And in this project, we're looking at community wayfinding, so it's more at a public realm and neighborhood level, and really getting the, you know, feel and aesthetic of the neighborhood as well.
Thank you very much. So you've got a PowerPoint to kind of work us through, guide us through. Let's dive right in. And if we can get this on the Zoom, as well as the cable TV.
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Lobna Chowdhury, as Jamie mentioned. I'm the project manager from the Neighborhood Design Center, representing this project. Thank you for your time today. As mentioned before, we've been working on this project with the city staff, currently working through the sign design concepts and a plan outline. We've given this presentation to the Green Belt Advisory Boards, had a few meetings with the stakeholders, mentioned on the slide here. And today, we're here for a work session with City Council. And we'll use this feedback to further the concept and the work for this project. So on this map, you'll see the Green Belt context we're working with, within this project's scope. We also, at the beginning of the project, the city provided an initial list of identifying major landmarks, attractions, civic centers, community gathering places that were important to Green Belt. And these key sites were organized into different categories based on type of use. So you can see there's community institutions, recreation and parks, et cetera. There's other sites identified at the bottom that were suggested during agency engagement, but they're not necessarily part of this design concept.
We'll pause at some point. I think council may have a couple of suggestions of some additional sites or thoughts.
Yeah, for sure. And we can send this PowerPoint and get, I mean, I think you already have the PowerPoint, but to get additional comments. So to show an example of the existing conditions research, we inventoried all of the locations of the key sites, mapped them, and we did this for each key type, key site type. We also created an image directory of associated signage of the key sites, so this exists for each one of those types. And then each key site also had some further analysis of the different types of information on the signage at the key sites, like location, what type of sign was being used, whether it has the Green Belt logo or not, et cetera. So this was part of the project for us to understand, you know, what Green Belt has right now. When looking at all of the key sites in context of each other, you can see the majority of them can be seen in historic Green Belt or Center City, while the business and commercial sites are kind of spread out all along Green Belt. The signage in the area is highly varied. There isn't consistent design language. While the wooden panel post signs are the most common, materials and content on those differ as well sometimes, ranging from just business name to addressed with arrows, et cetera. So the key sites feature some signage, but there is a lack of unified wayfinding to those sites, and then having maps and directory maps to guide visitors once they're at the key site. Should we stop or go on to the next session?
All right. I've got a couple of suggestions of sites that I didn't see that should be on there. And, well, the first couple, we've got community gardens, which are an important part of our history and heritage. And I think that we should, they should be identified along with our forest preserves. We've got forest preserve areas. Also, I noticed there were four cemeteries listed, so I was wondering, I'm just trying to think. I know three, but...
So I think maybe one of them has two names.
Okay.
But they're just on there because the sign exists for both.
See, I got a couple more, but Kristen, Kristen?
Yeah, no, I was just wondering, because, and it looks like Eleanor Roosevelt is on the other sites listed, but it didn't list the middle school or the Dora Kennedy or either the elementary schools, and I was just curious if that was, when they are not, they're, like, in terms of community institutions, they're not City of Greenbelt facilities, but it does seem like something that people might want to be, want to be able to find. Was there a reason the schools weren't included on the list?
Yeah, so these key sites, we had a much longer key site, you know, list, and we did have schools, churches, that kind of thing, but in the end, it kind of became important to highlight kind of the public realm and places that visitors go to, residents go to, and might be kind of the cultural amenities of Green Belt. Yeah.
Other suggestions? I got another one. It lists Greenbrook Lake. I don't know if it's on this page. But there's actually, there's the lake, the stormwater management pond or lake that's at Aura Glen. And then the Greenbrook Lake is separate. It's a little bit further, it's right by Schramm Hills Park. It is behind the Greenbrook townhouses, so there's actually two lake areas there, I suppose, or stormwater management ponds, whatever. So if anybody thinks of more things, we can shoot them over to you.
So part of this project also included a bit of community engagement. The city hosted a community survey, asking residents about challenges and wayfinding in Greenbelt. You can see some of the questions on the screen, so including questions on types of signage found most helpful, if there are any challenges and frustrations, et cetera. We had about 179 online responses. As far as the respondents, it was a mix of ages, but half of them were 45 to 74, so leaning towards the older generation side, but there were still quite a few, you know, younger respondents, mainly English-speaking, something to note, and the Center City residents accounted for about half of the respondents, so maybe that is a surprise or not. Yeah.
Usually what we get.
Okay. As far as visited the most, community institutions, recs, trails. And visited the least were cemeteries, hotels, business office parks. Again, not really a surprise.
That was a little surprising. I know internally, if you're talking to residents, that's one thing, but if you're talking to businesspeople or people that just aren't from Greenbelt, you know, Martin's Crosswind is in Greenbelt, and it's, a lot of weddings and banquets and big occasions take place there, so people all over know where that is. But I'm surprised that some of the medical offices and whatnot are not visited a little bit more. And maybe the cemetery should be visited more often.
Maybe not. No hurry to get there.
Okay, so MNCP also hosted a GIS mapping activity online where people were able to mark points where they thought there needed to be more improvement in signage. And again, you can see the majority of these points are in Center City as well. From the mapping and survey summary feedback, generally, there was concerns about inadequate and inconsistent signage, particularly at Roosevelt Center. Residents called for better placement, placement of directional signs to key landmarks, improve visibility of amenities from major roads, and enhancing some of the pedestrian signage. Consolidating signage across Greenbelt, that was a comment that came up a lot in order to ensure that businesses were more visible from main roads like Crescent and Southway. So in, there is a lot of feedback, obviously, from the surveys and the mapping, but if we were to organize them into three themes, then we're looking at signage type, updating them so that they're accessible signage type, and they have more informational maps and context. We need to look at the signage location, so need for more signage connecting different amenities within the city. And finally, looking at community character, so making sure that the signage reflects the community character of Greenbelt itself. So for the strategic wayfinding plan outline, we just wanted to kind of go back to that, building on the research of the existing conditions analysis. It'll provide a framework for the project, and the plan would be structured into key sections that outline the process, the concepts, and strategies moving forward. And in the next section, we'll be looking through design concepts and sign location recommendations. So we had asked what is wayfinding earlier. In general, wayfinding is the process of guiding people through a physical environment using visual cues or signage, maps and other design elements to help them navigate and reach their desired destination. And it's important to know that it combines, you know, information design and the placement to ensure that people are able, people feel confident about, you know, their chosen route. And we have this wayfinding tools, I guess you can call it a chart, to say that there's different levels of wayfinding. So there's standard wayfinding, which is, you know, your highway signs, a lot bigger scale, all the way down to enhanced wayfinding, which might be, you know, spray painted arrows on the road. And for this project, we're looking at community wayfinding, which kind of sits in the middle. So it should connect to the rest of the wayfinding tools that exist within a city, but it is kind of at a middle scale. So these are from the MNCP Wayfinding Process Manual, which is, again, a document that exists for all PG County, for any community or town that is looking to work on wayfinding. I mean, it has some really good design principles. We talked about a few of them, you know, connecting places, creating memories, showing the way. But this link is in here in case anyone is super interested to learn more about this. So for this conceptual plan, we're looking at four different types of signage. Welcome signage that greets visitors as they enter the town, directional signage that guides people to certain locations, identification signage that is for the key sites themselves, and also informational signage that includes kiosks or furthered historical markers and informational plaques. So there's lots of different layers.
Mayor Protam?
I just thought of something that's not on the list of important, of important community institutions. The Green Belt Museum isn't listed there.
It's not? It shouldn't be?
It's not. I just went back to look because I was like, surely, is it Green Belt? Oh, it's under Recreation and Parks. Okay, there we go. I was looking for it under the community institutions. Okay, okay. I think of it more of a community institution and less of Recreation and Parks, I guess, so I was looking for it in the wrong place.
That's good. I do think Martin's Crosswind should be listed under Commercial and Office Parks.
Which one?
Under Commercial and Office Parks, Martin's Crosswind, it's a place large events and banquets and weddings and festivals and things.
So...
Comments? Any comments? Let's keep moving.
So for this sign design concept, we first looked at the Green Belt logo and some of the color palettes that already exist within Green Belt. And again, there's inspiration from nature and the natural beauty of Green Belt. I mean, it's called Green Belt for a reason. So we started from there. For the first design option, it's similar to what exists now. There's use of natural materials with a little bit of highlight of the other colors. The materials and color palettes are similar across all family types, and this is, again, to create cohesion in the sign families. The second option is building upon that with a little bit of a more modern look, still keeping in line with the natural colors of Green Belt and some of those addition of the secondary colors. And then option three incorporates the Art Deco style that is prominent throughout Green Belt. This was a preferred style to explore during our engagement with the core project team and the advisory boards. And this family signage uses the city's primary and secondary colors, as well as simple graphics to emphasize the city's brand. The teal color from the seal is the dominant teal color for the remainder of the signs and banners, along with repetitive geometry reminiscent of the Art Deco style. So to break it down a little bit more, we're using the Art Deco style as the example. It doesn't mean that this is the one we're picking. It's just to show the different layers of the signage. So welcome signage includes the Gateway Monument sign, which is horizontally oriented and would be cited at key entry points into the city. The sign would say, "Welcome to the City of Greenbelt," with City of Greenbelt using internal illumination to enhance the nighttime visibility. So this is a comment that, again, came up in the stakeholder sessions. Directional signage includes vehicular, pedestrian and bike signage, and an option for trail markers. At certain locations, the pedestrian and bike decision will include iconography that indicates the direction to a local trail path, which can be supplemented by also including the trail name on one of the flags. The use of this sign with the pedestrian and bicycle icons could replace the standard green signs, the green and white trailway finding signs that are there by Departments of Parks and Rec, if located in the same proximity. DPR is currently updating its trailway finding signage guidelines, so a bit further coordination is needed for that.
DPR has been working on that for about six years, six or seven years, right?
For identification signs, it includes site identification signs and banners. They have a similar look to the gateway sign, so it incorporates the same Art Deco style for the name, and uses simple fonts for the address details. And finally, informational signage includes directories and small kiosks that could be placed at specific sites in order to provide an additional layer of information of the sites themselves. Keep going, or...
Mayor Protam? Councilmember?
Just a quick question on the color palette choices. Was there any consideration around the accessibility of the color choices and which would be the primary and the secondary? I'm assuming, I know that these are Green Belt's colors, but my guess is that some of those choices might have been chosen before we might have had more modern accessibility guidelines. And so I'm wondering, for example, with the light green, with the white on top of that, that could potentially be more difficult for some people to read, especially when you get a smaller font.
So you're, yeah, for example, this one, you're saying, can you see on the...
No, the light green. Go up a page, or, no, on page 23. So the one on the left, which is the Gateway Monument sign, that seems a little bit more difficult. So I'm wondering how that went into consideration when you were thinking about different options for pushing that out, if that was something that was raised.
Yeah, so I would say this was the first sign design concept, and as we went further, we kind of included or thought about accessibility to another degree, so this one, I would say, is, seems the most or least accessible. But it is conceptual, so there's no reason why you couldn't change the colors so that they do contrast a little bit more on the light green.
Mayor Protam?
Yeah, I just wanted some thoughts on there in terms of, as we go forward, thinking about the signs, you've got one type of banner there, but I'm wondering if we'll also think about sort of like the across-the-street banners that we use and other temporary sorts of things. And then also, you know, a style that could be used for the, like, historic interpretation signs. Because, maybe not exactly that vertical information directory one, but more, I'm thinking more of the, like, the ones that have a, you know, big table thing that you look at. Were there discussions about any of those, of further design types, sign types that might be needed, come up, or...
That hasn't happened yet, but we have talked about the, like, the historical interpretive signs. They could be a part, they could be an additional family, but they do have their kind of own design aesthetic and history within Green Belt. So it's a question for the city and council to, you know, decide if that is something that needs to be consolidated or reimagined in this design family.
And I realize that sort of gets away from the wayfinding, because those are not signs that are about wayfinding anymore. But it just seems like, I like the idea of sort of the unified look of all of these, and I'm not, and we're not gonna, obviously, I see on the, further on the list is like the budget and stuff, and we're clearly not going to be able to replace all the signs all at once anyway, so...
I kind of like, I like the color palette and the look of the first design one. So I was thinking, like, it doesn't have to actually be wood, but just the textured kind of signage.
I like the Art Deco.
I like the Art Deco too, except the Art Deco ones with the pointy thing, reminds me of the National Forest signs, or something. I don't know why, but it does. So let's keep going.
So cohesive welcome signage, including monument signs featuring the Green Belt logo, are proposed at city limits. are proposed at city limits and jurisdictional boundaries along key corridors such as Green Belt Road and Kennelworth Avenue to greet visitors, and clearly define entrances into Green Belt from all directions. So we have a couple others on there as well, so there's one along each Cardinal direction. When it comes to the key sites, we just want to take, I wanted to take a look back at the map and see, again, that most of the key sites are in Center City, and that kind of was a basis for some of the signage locations. We can see some of the main connecting corridors in red here, Green Belt Road, Kennelworth Avenue, Crescent Road and Southway, et cetera, and these, again, are highlighted here. For vehicular signage, we wanted to acknowledge that there are existing signage known as TAC or tourist area and corridor signage, and these are the brown sinages that you see that are similar to, you know, highway signs, and they might have one location highlighted on them. When doing the stakeholder session with SHA, they mentioned that there is flexibility in the TAC signage, and SHA may be receptive to renew or modify some of the existing signage to accommodate the local wayfinding signage. So in the map, you'll see there's locator points for sinages that could be, you could add an icon or modify the existing vehicular signage, as well as the vehicular design, vehicular decision signage that is existing in the wayfinding, you know, community design. So those are more along the inner roads like Crescent and Southway, whereas the sinages that could be modified are along the major corridors. And again, you can see the sign type here, and these, the vehicular signs in the community wayfinding signage would give you information about uses, not necessarily specific locations. So things like arts and culture, recreation, and food to inform visitors and residents that there are these types of uses, you know, this way. And there, we can go over all of them, but they're in here to locate, you know, where they exist on the major roadways. In the south, it was important to have some type of signage on Hanover Parkway so that you don't miss Shroom Hill Park, and that there are other key sites in the southern and western part of Green Belt. Okay, so for pedestrian signage, as you, if the pedestrian signage is along a bike or on a trail, it'll be marked with the icons. You can see at the bottom of the flags for the names. And trail markers, again, can be added along the route as a reminder to the pedestrian or biker that they are on a trail while in Green Belt. These markers are still up for discussion, but they exist as a family if needed. And again, on this map, you can see some of the major trails that go through Green Belt, and making sure that there is signage along the trails. And similarly, on the west and southern portions.
I wanted to comment on the last, on the fat page. So when you're coming into, actually, the one after that, when you're coming into Green Belt from the west on a bicycle, quite often cyclists tend to come up from Lake Artemisia on Branchville Road as opposed to Green Belt Road. So I think it's important to have signage that would actually guide people past the boardwalk and whatnot as opposed to Green Belt Road.
Okay.
It's actually on the next page, there, or, yeah, well, whatever. Daniel, please.
Sorry, mine was just a few back, which was on the, excuse me, the...
Hold on one second.
Oh, the Green Belt Gateway, so on page 28. Was there a consideration about putting signage, I guess, which would be northbound on Kennelworth and coming off of 295? So if you are going northbound on 295 and getting off of there, and you basically come right into where the safe way in that center is, there's, I mean, there's a lot of exit into Green Belt off of 295 from there, because it's 295 and 95 coming together.
Yeah, I mean, that is a location that can be added. We, there is a lot of signage that exists, so sometimes, right when you get off a highway, there's a lot of other signs that exist. If there's space in the median sometimes, that could be a place to put a gateway sign. But essentially, it's like that layer of information of, okay, this is the exit for Green Belt. That exists, so that's a reason why, because you're exiting to Green Belt, and then you have another sign for Green Belt, but we can look into that.
So going back to the first one, going northbound on Kennelworth, I actually think there's a gateway signage for Berwyn Heights when you're going southbound, but I don't think there's one saying you're going into Green Belt if you're coming northbound. Where, is that Westchester, whatever?
Westchester Park.
Yeah, same thing on, you know, Green Belt Road. College Park, there's a big monument sign there. Berwyn Heights has these smaller signs, so you definitely know when you're going into Berwyn Heights.
One more type. I just want to get through that. For the informational signage, directories could provide directional information to key sites as, such as the office and commercial parks within historic Green Belt and Center City, and offer details to surrounding sites once you reach kind of the main attraction. And the kiosks are recommended at key sites where more historical information or cultural information may be provided. It creates a visual cue to inform the visitor that this is a key site in Green Belt, so that is a list we can work with, you know, the project team to say that, okay, these are key sites that are maybe one set, or one set more important, and they deserve a kiosk that signifies that this is especially a key site in Green Belt.
I was wondering about that a little bit. We've got these commercial districts, I guess. The Trade Center District behind Greenway Center and all the medical buildings, the Medical Mile. So it seems like it would be, if there's some simple way of designating some of these different areas, we don't really have formal names for them, but, I don't know, do you have commercial zones that are sort of, that have monikers associated with them in a lot of settings?
So most of the business centers actually have their own design palette and branding and all of that, but they're, in the vehicular signage, you could add icons for, you know, business or retail, that kind of thing, but that would be in the vehicular signage, not necessarily at the site, because those sites are all private, and it would be hard to get them to follow Green Belt wayfinding signage.
Another additional thought is on the informational signage, when you come across the bridge from Eleanor Roosevelt High School, like, pointing people to where the center of the city is. If you didn't know, it goes, I don't know if that's on here.
Yeah, so we have the, we have the kiosk, but maybe it should be further up. But in the pedestrian signage, we do have, yeah, like, navigating people across this moment overpass so that they know that there is something past the bridge. Should I keep going? So to...
That sign that's in the bottom right-hand corner just kills me, the Atha sign, because it's a picture of Green Belt, but it's only at the center, and it sort of cuts the rest of the city out.
So, again, to talk about Atha, there are existing signs around Roosevelt Center especially, but the informational signage that we would recommend is more zoomed out and would be able to cover a larger area. Signage connecting to Roosevelt Center proposed in this study would be an addition to this signage, but there is room to consolidate some of their pedestrian signage so that it can be replaced with Green Belt wayfinding. Cohesive identification signage, featuring a unified design language, again, is recommended for the key sites. So each key site would have the same, you know, identification signage. Some of the sites might be privately owned sites, and they could opt out for their own branding, but that is, that's part of being in a town and having different types of places of cultural importance. But in general, the uniformity of the signs helps people quickly identify that, identify and understand the signs.
Yeah, I had a question on page 41 there, because I noticed, 41, the next one. Yeah, because I noticed that there was, there was identification for Shroom Hills and the Greenbelt Station Central Park, but it doesn't look like there's one indicated at Spring Hill Lake Rec Center for one of these identification signs.
Yeah, I will add that. I think it's up here. Thank you.
Let's see. Yeah, so I was talking with Councilmember Niesel about informational signs, but more so about historic designation signs or kiosk and whatnot, where there's information about these different areas. So going through this process, you sort of inventoried all these different sites, and Councilmember Niesel was saying how it might be a good idea to, you know, share this with Public Works or something, so there's actually a maintenance or replacement schedule. Some signs seem to, you know, every three years or so, they need to get changed around. And even with the natural wood signs that we have, after a while, they get a little bit fixed. Something that we can do sooner, just kind of taking this inventory, sharing it with Public Works, and, you know, having a replacement schedule.
Absolutely, and I've been communicating with Megan about some of the signs that you brought up, Mr. Mayor, the signs that were funded by Atha, and we're looking, reviewing those signs for replacement for next year's budget cycle. These signs will be different and would have a different maintenance program than our current signs. Right now, our signs are being made in-house. These signs, I don't think we have the capability and the equipment to make them in-house. So something to think about, right? So if something happens, like, recently, we had a car drive through one of our wood signs, well, we can fix those. I don't either. You know, you got to wonder what's going on at the nine hours. Replacing those signs will become a bit more challenging, so we might have to either stock up on signs or figure taking care of signs.
There are several places where, at least zoomed out, it looks like there are identification sinages and kiosks at the same place. Would they be located far away from each other? One would be more like by the roadside, and the other would be within the park type of thing, or?
Yeah, so for example, there's an informational kiosk at the front entrance of Roosevelt Center, and then as you keep walking, you would be able to see the smaller kiosks, so that you, yeah, yeah.
You're able to find your way using the breadcrumbs that we've left for you.
Yeah, and you would have, you know, the larger maps on the larger informational kiosks to say, these are all the key sites, and then since the design of the signage is somewhat similar, you can even see from where you're standing, okay, that's where I need to go.
Okay, great, thank you.
Are there, and this may be getting more into more details, but I'm thinking about ways to incorporate things like, I don't know, QR codes or other ways to get more information. Is that something that's?
Yeah, so that would definitely be within the recommendations. That's an easy thing to put in the report, to say, there should be a QR code, because that, again, it's another way to make it more accessible for people.
With the QR codes, so you have a QR code, you can, can you change where that actually points on the back end? You got the code, it's on the sign, and can you, you know, 10 years later go back and say, hey, we need to change the way that's worded, so?
I think you can change what's on the website. I don't think you can change the URL that it points to, because I think that...
So you have to have generic?
You could put something, well, yeah.
You could do a redirect easily.
I guess that's true, you could do that way. But you could always, I mean, you could change the content that it's pointing to very easily.
Yeah, yeah.
On the website, you'd probably have to do a redirect.
Or just use a generic kind of?
Or NFCs. NFCs can be reprogrammed, so you just tap them, and they're reprogrammable.
Yeah, I'm not sure if everybody's using those as much as the, I think, I think QR codes finally got sort of, got into common usage again. I'm not sure those are quite there yet.
Yeah, I don't know, I was at a conference, and there were so many QR codes, constantly picking up the phone, it was kind of aggravating.
They are helpful. So finally, for, we mentioned this already, but for identification signage, if the office parks and commercial centers wanted to be a part of the community wayfinding, they could use something as simple as a banner that is seen throughout the different commercial parks.
So with the banner idea era is so much, the way that the highways divide the city of Green Belt up, you know, many people say, oh, it's three sections, Green Belt East, Green Belt West, and Green Belt Center City, or Historic Green Belt, or something like that. So with banners, I guess there could be different themes, or maybe we wouldn't want that, but... Just throwing that out there.
The next portion is just essentially a directory for each of the different key site types and what type of signage it could include. So we're not really going over this, but it's just to say that there's different levels of wayfinding for each one of those key types. And moving forward, we're going to prepare a draft outline, as Jamie mentioned, share that again with the advisory board, so that after that, it'll come back to council again.
Thank you, thank you. This is a very, very interesting, thought-provoking, seems like it's easy to, pretty easy to do. So I do have a question in regard to Maryland National Park Capital, Maryland National Park and Planning Commission, just in terms of integration and coordination with the broader scheme that's associated with the county, particularly with the trail connections and whatnot. So are we all marching in lockstep with this proposal?
During our stakeholder sessions, we did have conversations with the Trails Plan staff, DPR, we did also have session, we had the County Department of Public Works and Transportation staff join for this work session. They have provided us with comments, since most of what they're looking is within the city of Green Belt limits. There is opportunity to coordinate with them, but city does have a lot of leverage in terms of what you can do. But definitely, as we move on to the final plan, NDC is going to come up with implementation strategies, so that would be, those areas would be looked at when it comes to the final report.
Yeah, I know that Atha is very sensitive and concerned about, just from the point of cultural tourism and bike tourism and just drawing people along, having sort of a similar branding, kind of going along with the trails. And also, from our point of view, we work so closely with our sister municipalities, particularly Berwyn Heights, College Park, and New Carrollton as well, so we might want to kind of discuss our plans. It seems like Berwyn Heights is a little bit further along than we are. College Park definitely has some things going. So what do you think, Jamie? Do you think that we'll be able to, or in your work, are you, have you spoken with, looked around in College Park and Berwyn Heights and New Carrollton to see where they're at with their plans for signage, wayfinding?
We have not. I'm not sure exactly if they are working on that or where they are. I think we've been focused on creating an identity for the city, excuse me, yeah, and kind of focusing internally rather than externally, so we haven't really looked closely at that. We have spoken with Atha throughout the process. kind of on a more regional scale, since they are kind of a blanket for the local community. We certainly could look at that as a part of the final draft, just to see what they're doing. But I do think that this would still, we'd still want it to look unique and not necessarily blend in with theirs so that when you're in Greenbelt, you know you're in Greenbelt.
Yeah, maybe we can just share, share our plan or something as we get a little bit closer, just share it with the four cities and they can look at it, read it and weep.
Brag.
I want bragging rights.
We can tell them to apply for their own technical assistance.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm curious, did APB look at the three sign designs? Did they have any thoughts on those?
Yes, so I do have some draft notes, though I've been told that sometimes my notes are a little high level. So it may not, I can't, I actually needed to look back at them, but the draft notes should be in your, or I'm sorry, these were actually approved. They're not draft anymore. Notes from an APB met, along with a representative from the Arts Advisory Board. Actually, at that point, there were just two design concepts. And one of the big reasons the Deco came up is because they brought that up and a desire to see kind of a Deco rendering.
Okay, yeah, because it just, it looked like a bunch of questions here. I guess I was curious, but so they didn't, but they, so they hadn't, haven't seen necessarily the third, the Art Deco design yet. Okay.
Not. Not formally, anyway.
Yeah.
I'm sure they all reviewed tonight's packet.
I suspect many of them probably did, but yeah. They haven't, it hasn't officially been assigned as homework yet.
Councilmember Pompey, I'm looking at your water bottle and there's a historic site that's not on the list.
Greenbelt utility pole, that's right.
I mean, there are actually two.
Right.
So we would have to make sure they were on them.
Historic Greenbelt utility.
That's right.
Somebody had to bring them.
Well, this, yeah, we'll see where the, I was going to say, we'll see where the, the, like, the, somebody could take the designs and create their own matching sticker for the utility poles. I'm sure that, I'm guessing that's what will happen.
That will happen. I won't be far behind. I'm positive.
Well, this is great. You know, thank you for your good work. So just in terms of the timeline, and you know, I'm very interested, you know, from a budgetary standpoint and just having sort of like an implementation plan, how we can kind of break this up into chunks and kind of hanging fruit and, you know, it's just nice having this style guide, more or less, and having an inventory of all the sites. We've kind of been working on that for a while, but this is a big step. So the funding and certainly the knowledge and expertise of the design centers has just been really, really helpful. Any questions online?
I don't think there's anybody online.
Anybody online? Okay. Well, yeah, Mr. Orleans, please.
Bill Orleans, Mr. President. I wouldn't want to be critical of the Assistant Director of the Community Planning Department, but it might have been helpful to have at least a brief memo indicating the history of this project. I don't know. I think I heard that P A M C grant funded the initial consultation with NDC and the work that they did in putting together this presentation. Let me say, I don't oppose wayfinding. I've been a fan of wayfinding for a long time. But there's no suggestion as to whether there would be further MN, Maryland National College Park and Planning Commission funding, grant funding for the implementation that was referred to a minute or two ago. And my only thought is that while wayfinding is great, and it would be great to have wayfinding in Greenbelt, if it's not to be grant funded, that means that council would be budgeting money to implement what will be the final plan when it's presented to council. And I'm just wondering if, whatever its costs, that small amount or larger amount of money might not be better put in the city of Greenbelt at the moment. I don't know what you can answer, Assistant Director, but I do recommend a memo.
Well, thank you, thank you. See, other questions or? Assistant Director here, just anything to kind of wrap this up or?
Sure. So I just, I think to Mr. Orleans' comment, the, there is in the packet a more detailed outline of what we expect from the draft plan. So there will be preliminary cost estimates as well as potential funding sources. So it, correct, this actually, there wasn't actually an official grant. This is a technical assistance offering. So we, there was no pass through from us to NDC. We work with MNC PPC and they manage the consultation from NDC. So that is how this has been working. So I think we will be looking for potential grant resources and other resources. I can't really predict what those may be, but it could be, one of them, I imagine, will be similar to the funding that we got, the community legacy funding that we used to pay for the gateway sign on Southway, the new one that has not yet been hit by a car. Fingers crossed. I think that might be a really great potential funding source, but not the only one, I hope. So that's one that we could look at. As far as a memo, there will be an APB report after this goes to APB and there will be a staff memo that will accompany everything when we take that APB report back to council for final adoption. So that should have a little bit more of the background in it.
Okay. So thank you so much for your good work. Looking forward to moving ahead with next steps. Anybody see any other sites or anything that needs to be added to this list? Okay, well, really, really appreciate the good work and looking forward to moving forward with this. You okay?
Yeah.
So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's like we can wrap things up pretty early tonight. Wednesday will be a longer work session. We have a presentation by Tribesi. We've got a special meeting with, I believe there's some ARPA contracts that we have to consider. And also, we have an executive session. So I suspect that we'll go a little bit longer on Wednesday.